Okay, good afternoon. We're back on recording. Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for October 7, 2014 will resume with the new cases, item number 19, which is 174 13BZ, 2449 Morris Avenue, The Bronx. Mr. Chester?
Jeffrey Chester, Gonzalesa Joan Harland for the applicant. Good afternoon, the Chair Commissioners. It's a reestablishment of an existing physical culture establishment. As you know, I was at executive session yesterday, and I know there were some comments. We received a letter, I think it was last week, from Deputy Chief Inspector Scudero of the Fire Department. So, we will be installing an interior fire alarm system. It's not in the premises as we speak, but we will be installing that. And all the notes that the FDNY wanted will be placed on the plans.
Can you give me a schedule on the installation of the Fire Department requirements?
I'm being told four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks.
December.
December. So, this is a reestablishment, a so-called reestablishment?
Well, it's a—right.
So, how long is—it—the gym's been out in operation since 1997, and it was supposed to have fire alarm systems installed earlier, no? God, there was in—a yeah. It was supposed to have a fire alarm system installed earlier, and so what's happened with that? The owner wants to speak to that.
I don't know—I don't—I don't—well, the owner's not here. I have some represent—real estate representatives from Lucille Roberts that are here. They were not here in 1997.
Right. No, but so the point is, if we—if we were to grant prior to you installing the fire alarm system, there's no motivation for you to install a fire alarm system?
Well, if—in fact, that wasn't what happened last time, then I can understand that. You want to adjourn it, make it conditional?
I would like to see, yeah, plans for the installation and a tight timeline for its installation before we can grant.
Understood.
Any other comments? Are there any speakers on this item? And also, we wanted you to go through the fire safety narrative in the findings. There was no narrative provided with the materials.
Okay. We'll do that.
Also, there was the ADA waiver supposedly?
Well, yeah, let me speak to that. There were two things. I think one of the things was referenced in my statement of facts. What actually happened is that, back in 2009, Lucille Roberts received a complaint—a potential client in a wheelchair made a complaint that some of the Lucille Roberts locations in the Bronx were not compliant. The U.S. Attorney's Office for the Southern District, Civil Division, then launched an investigation, which we cooperated with. And they defined the market area for Lucille Roberts in this instance as northern Manhattan and the Bronx. There were multiple locations, and we eventually settled with them in 2012. We made certain changes to three specific locations, not this included. The reason this was included was the U.S. Attorney's Office was okay with us being able to provide substitute facilities or substantially the same facilities within a short distance of this location. As far as that, their investigation and that complaint, that was resolved that way. Now, in addition to that, in 1997, we got a Local Law 58 waiver from the mayor's office.
Okay, but that was—that predates enforcement under Department of Justice subsequent to that. I mean—
Well, the ADA—it ADA was 1991.
Yeah, but not—since '97, there's been a lot of difference—there's a lot of—been a lot of movement in terms of Department of Justice enforcement of ADA requirements, so I would want to see the materials that you're describing in your settlement with the DOJ.
Absolutely.
Okay, so—okay, so are there no speakers on this matter, so we can schedule—sorry? Sinage? Oh, there's the question—I'm sorry, ask the question about signage?
Yes, I believe that there was a question of signage reconciliation between—was neither of our questions, but it came up yesterday.
Yeah, I thought there was a question about signage, whether it matched—the plans, what was shown on the plans matched what was in the zoning?
Yes, that's exactly—
The sign analysis table? Okay, we will—the architect will take a look at that again, we'll make sure of that.
Okay. Okay, so, we need to see the schedule on the installation of fire safety equipment. So, how much time do you need to get us those materials? And by the way, you should get started on actually installing the fire safety equipment.
Right, right. So, you don't—you want to have a hearing in the interim before it's actually installed? How does the chairman—
No, what I—I would like to see submissions to give us an idea of what you're actually doing, so that this doesn't just drag out indefinitely.
Absolutely.
So, you should submit—do you think you could submit on the 28th of October?
I think we could submit a schedule, maybe some supplementary materials from a contractor or that kind of thing by then, sure.
Okay, that would be good. And then, yes, we'll hold off on the vote until—we get more information about the installation, but we want a tight schedule on the installation before we vote.
Understood.
Okay, so I'm not exactly sure how we do this procedurally. So, submission on the 28th, and maybe we can revisit on the—how about this, we revisit on the 18th, you come for hearing, so you can give us a progress report on the installation on November 18th.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 233814BZ, 116 Oxford Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good afternoon. We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard the board's questions and comments. I guess I'll start from the easiest to the question with the—one of the question. You'd asked to provide you with a streetscape with a photo montage of both sides of the streets, and we'll be happy to provide that for you. We'll also be happy to remove the parking from the front yard. We know that your board had concerns about that. And we're either going to revise the plans to show parking within the building underneath it, or we're going to have it with no parking on one or the other. And then, there were two more questions that pertain to the drawings. One was—you had questioned that there's a bump—a bump out that appears to be on another property, and I believe you were talking on the northern side of our home. There's a portion of our home that extends on to the other zoning lot. That portion that extends on to the other zoning lot and tax lot is going to be removed. So, we were obviously not asking for any approval that does not line up exactly on our property. I don't know how that condition came to be. It's been like this for a very long time. We're not making any adverse possession claims against anybody. We're simply going to remove—it.
Well, it just seemed to me that the shape of the building has changed over some time, and that bump was somewhat indicative of that change, because when you gave us the Sanborn that was, I guess, circa 19-whatever it was, 30-something?
Right, I saw that.
The building looks relatively rectangular without any malformations whatsoever, and it looks like it has a side yard of some sort. So, it's not clear to me that even the existing condition, as you're proposing it now, is what was there, say, in 1930, because there are no permits that seem to have been taken out for any construction.
Right, and I'm trying to find it now, but I think there was some subsequent Sanborn maps from the 60s—or the 50s, excuse me—that showed it. I only see the 1930 Sanborn map here with me, but I believe we had a subsequent Sanborn map.
But do you have anything to show the legality of the change at all?
No.
I mean, you could—might be able to show me something in 1960 with a different shape, but you—there's nothing that's been filed to permit that new shape of the building?
No, there were no records on file at Department of Buildings to show that.
So, I'm concerned that, you know, you might have a portion of your building that's illegal, and that you're saying that that's an existing condition that's been there forever, and perhaps it hasn't.
So, your question—where you're really going with the questioning is to make sure that the existing configuration of the home predated 1961, or any filings on handed to Department of Buildings.
And that it was a legal addition to the building, because you've got a noncompliance, right? You've got a side yard?
Yeah, we have a side—we have no side yard on that side. We've got a zero in side yard.
So, I guess my question is, is that how did that happen if your Sanborns show that you had a different shape of the building?
Your original C of O was issued in 1921. You have a 19—
1930 Sanborn map, so, yes.
And you have no job application.
So, we'll see if we could find some information to provide you that gives you more information and more knowledge as to how that got to be in that condition. And then, the board had a second question about the bump at—the rear yard lot lines, rear yard dimensions, I think the question was. You heard some confusion over them, which I think I know—
Not exactly confusion, it's—you have—you have a jagged rear yard, right? Right?
Correct. The northern—the northern portion of the zoning lot.
Right. So, in other words, what you're doing is you're asking for a 20-foot rear yard from what you traditionally think of as the rear yard, but in fact, this zoning lot has three rear yard lot—rear lot lines, from all of which you have to pull back 30 feet. And the most that we could do under this special permit is allow a pullback of 20 feet, and you're not pulling back in two cases at all, because you see where the jagged line is?
Are you suggesting that you're viewing from the—I'll call it—the—we have this this plan here—I'm sure you have the plot line with the same dimensions, the 2.2-inch number. From that point towards the house, you're—
That's a rear lot line, and so is—
You're suggesting that that would be a rear lot line?
And so, I'm not suggesting that it's a rear lot line. And so is that other one, the one I think it's seven foot something. I don't have the plan that one open, just a second.
Let me find out. I'd like to speak maybe with the architect and maybe bring it to the Department of Buildings to see if that would in fact be the rear lot line. I'm not sure if—if the—what I would consider to be the true rear lot line is the override—is the rear lot line, or if these would be—I see your question, or if these would be—
Just to look—just look at the definition of a rear lot line. It's parallel with the street, right?
Yeah, but I don't know—
And there are many lots that have multiple rear lot lines. So, a piece of your lot is sort of a flag. Another piece of your lot has a seven foot five inch rear lot line. Another piece has a two foot two inch rear lot line.
Right, but the building is—right now, if I could just take a look at the existing The portion for which we're requesting the—well, I guess it's really—it'd be a straight-line extension. At the first floor, we'd be okay, because we'd be grandfathered in its current condition.
Assuming that all of those little bumps are grandfathered.
Right, the conversation that we just had a moment ago. So, it's really a matter of at the second and third floors—
What's confusing is, it sounds like—if—I'm not sure what the date was, but that there was a subdivision of the property at some point not too long ago, which must have—must have created this very oddly shaped lot. And it's sort of—they created all of these conditions that rendered this existing building, if it indeed was an existing building—
It caused noncompliance, which wouldn't make sense, because the subdivision wouldn't be able to be approved if it did that.
Correct. You've got something in your papers about a sort of—some kind of a tax lot subdivision that occurred in the last 20 years, or something like that.
Okay, I think I need to get with Department of Buildings a little bit, though, do a little more research for the board, so you can give us some time to do that.
So, that one—that's the biggest problem with the application, that you'll need to pull back so far from that line that you don't really have much in the way of building back there.
On that side.
On that side, yeah. Because the best we would be able to do for you is allow 20 feet from the part that's two foot two inches wide.
Right, which would pull it back substantially on that side of the home at the second—at the second and third floor.
Exactly, it almost eliminates your—that half of your floor.
I understand what the board is raising. Like I said, I'd like to do a little more research at the Department of Buildings level and see and confirm what your interpretation is of it, and also to get me some more information on the subdivision.
Okay. Are there any other—
You need one positive to the visual mitigation measures at the front?
Yeah.
The elevation difference between your first floor and your curb level is 8.7 feet. So, at one—at six feet, you need one mitigation measure, and at nine, you need two. So, I don't know if you would be rounds on these elevation differences, but you need something in front, too.
And actually, in terms of this—the height above grade that you're lifting, the drawings are kind of inconsistent. So, it seems as if you had a five foot four inch requirement by FEMA and a seven foot height inch proposed—seven foot height proposed to make space underneath usable. But the fact that—and the statement of facts indicates that the building is being lifted like 13 feet, which is not the case. So, if you could just really, really clarify that and tell us exactly what the height of the lift is and what the FEMA regs are with respect to that lift?
Would be happy to.
That would be good.
I also had some questions about your area study. Those are your two.
Yes.
I mean, you had the other area study for the home on Norfolk Street, which was greatly improved, but this one has a lot of errors.
Yes, well, this carried over—not necessarily errors, but it carries over the old format, so we'll be able to update—
Just for example, 155 Norfolk has a special permit, 1.0, you listed as 1.2. 136 Norfolk has a special permit, 4.79, and it's listed as 1.11. And 130 Oxford came to us for a special permit, and the case was dismissed for lack of prosecution, and you listed legally as 1.52.
Okay, we'll go back—
But that's just a few.
We'll go back through them, and we'll see which ones might have mistakes, and then we'll correct.
Okay.
Great. Actually, you know, with respect to that, I'm impressed with that research. It would be helpful, when you're citing to the BSA approvals, that maybe you attach the cases that were associated with those approvals. That way, we have a very nice, tight sort of history of that block, complete with photos and FAR and floor area and lot area on that.
We'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Is there any speakers on this item? Okay, I'm—you're going to need some time—
Yeah, if we can submit within three weeks, three weeks will give us—
Get back to DOB within that time?
I think—yeah, we'll move quickly.
Okay, so, if you could submit on the 5th of November for a hearing on the 18th?
That'd be great, thank you.
Item number 2210414BZ, 282 South Fifth Street, also known as 287 Broadway, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. Josh Ryan Smith of Warsaw Berstein for the applicant. This is a special permit application pursuant to 7336 of the zoning resolution to permit on a portion of the first floor and a portion of the second floor of a new building being built at the premises, the operation of a physical culture establishment. I understand there were some questions yesterday at the review session regarding the demising walls between the subject fitness center space and other uses within the building, and I believe your concerns are primarily centered on noise impacts on residential uses. The fitness center is going to be located within a portion of the building that fronts 287 Broadway, with the residential tower beginning at the third floor and being located primarily toward South Fifth Street. There is a slight overhang at the fourth floor over, you know, what would be the PCE space beneath. However, the PCE is on the second floor, directly above the PCE space on the second floor, so the second floor roof is actually going to be a green amenity space for the building's residents. The PCE won't share any demising walls with residential users. And then, on the second floor, sort of facing or fronting South Fifth Street, is going to be community facility space. So, the fitness center is not going to share any walls with any residential users.
And it is—but it is with this community facility space?
Correct.
So, do you know what the intended use is? Is that sort of for parties? Is that for community board meetings?
Sure. I do not know that. I actually don't think the building owner knows that yet.
Okay, so, in that case, you do have a sound insulation issue, right? So, that definitely needs to be addressed in terms of that. So, if you could have the architect submit their proposal for how they're going to isolate the sound of the—it's basically, you know, treadmills and bicycles that we're talking about, and the end of the music.
Absolutely.
Okay, so—
I have a question about—that you've had this issue before, that you could just give us DOB-approved plans for that floor, showing you're not going to be applying any community facility space.
I'm sorry?
For the building itself? DOB-approved plans of the building?
Yes, but showing that the community—
That you're going to be what was zoned for commercial use and not for community facility.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that you're in the commercial section of the building that's shown on the zoning drawings?
Absolutely. I believe the Department of Buildings drawings, in order to get permits, represented as a dance studio, I'll get copies of those, and we'll submit them to the board.
Okay, great, thanks. And I also don't—I know we have a—we have a Fire Department sign off. Did we get a Department of Investigation sign off on this yet? Okay. And we're waiting also for the community board recommendation, is that true? Do you know what's going on with that?
We had—we met with the full community board in the beginning of June, and subsequently with the committee later in June. They issued a recommendation approving our application. However, it—the recommendation notes that they will be formally adopting the recommendation of the committee at the full board meeting in September. It appears they did not go ahead and do that. We contacted the community board, and we're trying to get them to put it on the schedule for the October 20th meeting.
Okay, okay. So, in that case—okay, so, if you could submit then—so, October 20th. So, if you could submit then by the the 5th of November?
Sure.
To get the time to get that community board materials, and then for a hearing on the 18th, and I think we could—we could probably close this, just and wait those submissions.
Okay.
Okay, so, for motion to close?
Chair Parmauda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hanksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Item number 2314114BZ, 2465 Broadway, Manhattan.
Good afternoon. Todd Dale for the applicant. So, from review session, we understand that the board had questions regarding the western portion of the lot that extends into the R8 residential district. With respect to that, this application proposed plans were designed in reliance on a previous decision of the board. It's actually been before the board three times, 18295BZ. That's for the Equinox Gym, which is also located in 2465 Broadway. It's also in the building next door to the north, in a companion case, 18395BZ. Prior to the hearing this week, we did submit copies of all those resolutions, showing that the board had in 1997, 2000, and 2006 approved the PCE space located in that western portion in the R8, based upon the assumption that it was a pre-existing grandfathered, nonconforming commercial use. The case files that we had in our office, because our office actually represented the applicant Equinox and those previous actions, we were also able to find the 1997 plans that showed the PCE space in the R8 district. Since then, digging back in our own personal archives, we also found the 1997 plans and the 2000 plans, which consistently show that a PCE was located in the same space that's proposed to be occupied by this sole cycle just on the floor above, so—
In the cellar, Equinox was—
Equinox is on the cellar level, correct.
But so, then how do you account for in 2006, the BSA resolution, an extension of term, stated that the PCE is located only in the C46A district?
I would say the two things to that. First of all, the plans that it references clearly show that the PCE is in the R8 district, so I think that there are errors within that resolution as far as reference. Also, we believe that there's copying, cut and paste issues with those two resolutions, because if you look at 182 and 183, since much of the language would be similar between the two, they might have shared the language. When it talks about it being in that section, immediately before that, it talks about it being in a two-story commercial building, when it's a three-story building. So, it just appears that there may have been some language transposed between those two resolutions, 182 and 183. I'm not sure—I didn't draft the resolutions at the time, but I think that in this instance, reliance on the plans and the history of the plans, you know, with three sets of plans, we believe that the language of the resolution was was drafted in error.
Okay, so then, for instance, there's no certificate of occupancy for the cellar level, or at least the one that was provided with the application. It shows nothing for the cellar. It starts at the first floor. So, as far as the C of O is concerned, there isn't an occupancy in the cellar of anybody—by anyone.
I think the issue here, and again, we'll get clarification, and we can talk to the architect about that. When it says the cellar, in one of the iterations of the plans, it calls it a basement, which I don't know if that is reference to the first floor. So, we would need to take a look at it. But the certificate of occupancy that was included shows the PCE, and we can go back and look at the older certificate of occupancies. We just have the most recent one, just to see, you know, what what's going on there with the history. But the fact is, since, you know, 1995, when this was filed, and 1997 action, for 17 years, there's been a PCE in this same space, the same level of extension.
Not the same space, no, not the same space.
Not the same space, but in the same—the same extent into the R8 residential district. And the board previously, on three separate occasions, found that the PCE was a permitted continuation of this nonconforming commercial use.
Do you know under what argument? Under what legal argument?
That's why we've ordered the archives. You know, spoke to the attorney who was at the previous case, and he had a recollection that it was discussed by the board. I don't know the particular argument, but he knows that it was raised as an issue. Also, you know, we looked at—we had in our immediate file, the most recent application, and on the application form, it lists the R8 district, and the statement, it speaks to the R8 district. We've—as I said, we've ordered the official case file from the board. We've requested that it be expedited, because it's a hearing. You know, if the board could do something to help with that expediting, we believe that it'll show perhaps a little more reasoning as to what discussion was as far as that space.
Okay, so, but we do actually have a problem here, because at the moment, it's not clear what the legal argument would be to be allowed to grant that special permit for the R8 district, because that was a—that grandfather use is a use group six, right? And so, it's not as if you can change by right a use group six to a physical culture establishment in an R8, right?
Well, I would say that if it's pre-existing commercial, I would say that the language of the zoning resolution isn't necessarily clear on that. Special permit, you know, it's been a commercial use, you know, we're just continuing a commercial use that happens related to a special permit. The PCE, since it's not part of a use group, some of the definitions within, you know, changing use sections that apply to use group wouldn't directly apply to the PCE, and could explain why the board, you know, in three previous instances, allowed this special permit.
So, I think actually, though, to make—to even make this something that we can consider, that little area, you need to make the legal argument for why this should be a permitted use on that first floor.
Well, we can definitely take a look at that, but I would say, right now, I'd say that the primary legal argument is the fact that the board has been doing it for 17 years, and what what in this particular application is different from that application. The board previously found that this was a nonconforming commercial use, permitted nonconforming commercial use, and authorized a special permit in 1997, 2000, 2006. This is extending the same amount of the R8 district. There's no material difference between the difference of this extension, so I say the primary legal argument is the record of the board in this particular building.
Well, but let's just say for argument's sake—not that I know, just let's say for argument's sake, the board made an error, because it didn't understand that that portion was in a residence district. Let's just say. Then what would it—then how could it proceed even if it had been this ongoing approval? How could it proceed? What would be its authority?
We'll definitely explore that, but I would say that the fact that the board made a mistake, I would find implausible. On three separate occasions, with three separate sets of plans, that clearly show it's in the R8 district. And I can't speak to the two iterations of the board in 97 and 2000, because I wasn't here, but I know that the previous chair is definitely someone who would have looked at that particular issue in 2006. So, saying that the board wasn't aware the issue of the R8 and the nonconforming commercial use, and the fact that—
But in 2006, the resolution states that the PC is located in the— But in 2006, the resolution states that the PCE is located in the C46A.
And that PCE immediately prior to that has an actual error there, refers to it as this two-story building when it's not a two-story building, and it's fairly clear when you look at the language between the two, 18295 and 18395, which is for 2473 Broadway, it's clear that there were some cut and paste copying errors between those two resolutions, and it didn't come up as an issue because the PCE was just operating as it always had operated since 1997.
But then, so what you're saying is the resolution had a mistake, but it's not possible for the board to make a mistake?
I would say yes, because I don't think commissioners are drafting the resolutions, are they?
Well, effectively, yes.
No, well, I just, I think that, I think that there could be, there could be an error there, so I don't, you know, we'll look back at the, the, the record in the file, but, you know, as I said, this design was done in reliance on the record of the board for nearly two decades. And, you know, we understand the issues that are being raised, but we would say first and foremost, what's on the record is what should take precedence.
Okay, well, I think you have a lot of work to do, let's just say, right? That you, you actually have to make this argument for us, as opposed to us making the argument for you?
That's fine, and, and we can do that. And as I, and even though we feel strongly about this, we'll also explore the potential 7352 special permit, which allows extension 25 feet, you know, understanding that it's a, you know, 139 feet, and we can also explore the possibility of a variance, using good faith reliance towards the issue of any condition.
Yeah.
I, no, just to agree with the chair, and I will echo what she has said, that I think you need to give us a cogent legal argument for your position, and considering, I guess your office handled this in the past two iterations, you must have come up with a legal argument for those times, I should imagine you've got that in your file and you should come up with it. And putting, putting it sort of on the board is not something that's sufficient to give us the ability to accept what you're saying, so I think you need to actually do the homework.
That's fine, and to clarify, I wouldn't put the legal argument on the board, but what I would put on the board is their previous three actions in these cases.
Okay, understood. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, you probably have some work, so I'm thinking you probably do three weeks, something like that? Good?
To be honest, the, the majority of what we have to do is going to be tied to how quickly we can get that file from archives.
Oh, okay.
Because we would like to supplement, you know, our own personal file in the office, we wouldn't necessarily keep all the correspondence or have access, the correspondence boards would do. Assuming that file came in, we ordered it this week expedited, so if it came in early November, hopefully, I think we should be able, I don't know if there's like a hearing date on the 25th, I think that that might.
Of November, there, there is, yeah. Is that enough time for you to make your argument, though, if it came in early November, you would need a few weeks to put together the argument?
I, well, I think that much of what we have in the argument, we'll be able to do with what we have now, the file would just be supplemental evidence, so I think that, you know, if, if it works for the board, I think the 25th would be good as a hearing date, with the understanding that if for some reason the archive file takes six weeks to come in, that is what it is.
Okay, so how about a submission date of November 11th, or is that too early?
Sure, no, that should, that should be fine.
I'm sorry, November 12th, it's a holiday, I mean.
Okay.
The 12th and a hearing on the 25th of November.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and the other thing I just wanted to point out, sorry, I just wanted to, I left that out, there's actually fire department comments on this application as well.
Received the, the letter today, it, it seems like the fire department note that the architect put on omitted two lines, and we'll gladly put those two lines back in there.
Okay, and there's issues about the fire safety system, but you'll get a copy, you have a copy of the.
Hundred percent have the letter, and that's very easy to resolve.
Okay, great, thank you.
Item number 24, 5914BZ, 114122 Jackson Street, Brooklyn, the office of Goldman Harris.
Good afternoon, and thank you for accommodating our request to be the last item on the agenda. I know you've had a long day, and hopefully this won't stretch you too much further. I'm Caroline Harris of Goldman Harris, representing School Settlement House in St. Nick's Alliance, the applicant for this BSA variance 5914. I know you've, you're prepared, well-prepared, and have a lot, had a lot of questions yesterday regarding virtually every aspect of our application, programmatic needs, unique physical conditions, design issues, neighborhood character. I wanted to start out with addressing some of the questions regarding our, our proposal that SSA be considered at least in part as an educational institution. Not entirely, it's a not-for-profit, and we're showing that there is a unique physical condition, but, well, we threw discussions with the, the prior chair before the switch. This approach was, a hybrid approach was recommended to be explored, and that's what we're exploring here, a hybrid of being an educational institution and a regular not-for-profit. The reason it's warranted to, to support SSA as an educational institution under Cornell is that SSA is providing for the health, morals, and welfare of the community, just like a church or a school would. It doesn't have a religious insignia on it, although it is affiliated with St. Nick's Alliance. St. Nick's itself is now a secular institution, but were it a part of a community house for a religious institution, or an annex to a school, it would be providing exactly the same services, type of services, as one of those institutions that would be given the leeway and deference accorded to such institutions under, under Cornell. So in that respect, that it provides for the health, welfare, and morals of the community in a very significant way, very similar to a religious institution or a school, we think that that kind of leeway or deference given to those institutions should be afforded SSA here, including, not, not in a general sense, but because specifically, in the past, it has had a very specific programmatic relationship with the public schools onsite. It's also had them offsite, where it's provided extras, after-school educational enrichment in other public schools on their premises. Because of the way the Department of Education funds programs and other agencies that fund extracurricular programs, it isn't formally part of the DOE, but it is serving, in those after-school programs, it is serving the educational needs of the public schools. In the past, SSA did have a program that operated during the school day with Public School 132, to provide the educational facilities for the public school, to serve, to meet its requirements under the state law to provide recreation facilities for students. The local public schools have no gymnasium, and the gymnasium at SSA's current building had to be, ceased being used for that purpose because certain code requirements weren't being met. By having a gymnasium, the only place where a gym can be constructed in this neighborhood that could be, it's as if the public schools would be building a gym for their own schools, but they can't, there's no space for it, there's not the budget for it. So SSA, as a community institution, is kind of picking up that, that burden, that responsibility to help provide a really important facility for the public schools. You had suggested, requested that we obtain letters from either DOE or from the schools themselves confirming, not only confirming their interest, but making a solid, a serious commitment. There's a bit of a catch-22 in that. None of, neither the DOE nor the schools can sign a commitment to use a building that doesn't exist yet. They can only make that commitment after the building is erected, and they see that it complies with the standards of the School, School Construction Authority, or the Department of Health in the case of the pre-K programs. So until we, they build it, they really can't come.
Well, but don't they have specifications? Because if, how do you know you're building a building that complies, that will comply with their needs unless you work with them to comply with their needs? And I see Ms. Gross sort of bridling there.
Ms. Gross is the architect, and when she speaks, she will address that, but indeed, the design of this building has been made to meet the SCA requirements and the Department of Health requirements for classroom, the DOHs would be particularly classrooms for pre-K. Now, as, St. Nick's Alliance, the, the network that SSA is part of, already provides pre-K in conjunction with the city's program, this new universal pre-K, they're one of the leaders in providing that service. They will continue to provide, they would provide that service in the new building, assuming the program continues in the city and the city has great continued need for pre-K. Because we're designing, the building is being designed to accommodate and address the DOH regulations. So the fact that this building is designed to comply with DOH regulations that would apply to pre-K, or to SCA guidelines or standards that would apply to public schools, it's exactly how it's being designed, and Ms. Gross can address that.
Okay, but so just to continue with that a little bit, so if you were to meet with someone from the Department of Education, or from whatever, School Construction Authority, whatever the agency might be, that would ultimately agree to house some of these, these programs in this building, and you were to say to them, here are the drawings, I'm an experienced school program architect, and, and is going to meet all of the Department of Health requirements and it's the education requirements and so on, is this something that the Department of Education would be interested in, would the Department of Education be interested in working with us on this? I'm, I'm thinking that you would get some kind of a letter of interest, we don't see that even.
What I, I can have, the head of St. Nick's Alliance is here, and Mr. Michael Roachford, so I think he's been listed as a speaker, and I can have him come up and, he can either answer it right now if you'd like, or we can finish my part and then let him come up and speak to that, to that issue.
Let me finish.
So, if, applying, then if, if we could meet that standard for Cornell, or show a greater connection between our design and what we actually intend to have there, and the programs that we expect will be there when it's built, then I think we can look to Cornell as providing some of the guidance for the legal standard that would apply in this project. Again, I'm not relying entirely on this. We believe that the, the proposed building does not impact negatively on the health, morals, and welfare of the community, and therefore would meet Cornell's standards in terms of balancing the competing interests of a educational religious institution against the community. So even if we're not a, SSA's not a school in a traditional sense, it does provide those accessory school things, and serves the public health, morals, and welfare. The design here doesn't negatively impact the morals, or the health, or welfare of the community. Now, even, even without its status as an educational institution, there are unique physical conditions that severely impact the ability to meet the zoning requirements while serving the programmatic needs of the institution. As we explained there in the papers, but I understand the papers are kind of, maybe we need to re-present our, our arguments in a simpler, clearer framework, and we will work on that. The building's obsolescence both prevents it from being used properly now, it prevents it from being enlarged, and set forth in our papers, there's been a very serious study prepared by AG, by Amy Gross Architects, showing how it is obsolete and can't be used currently, can't be enlarged to meet our, the needs of the institution, and therefore it has to be demolished. This distinguishes it from some of the other cases that have involved community facilities of the same nature, where all they were seeking were an enlargement. This project can't be enlarged, this building can't be enlarged. We will provide you, oh, the, the second very significant physical condition is that there's an extremely high water table here, it's a nine feet below grade, and that study was performed by Muser, which is one of the most trusted geotech engineering firms in the city. It means there's an inability to excavate, it increases development costs, we can't put in a cellar, we can't put in a basement, even a small basement, there was a small basement now, but if we put in a basement, it still counts as floor area, and then it pushes up the, Amy, you'll have, Ms. Gross will have to explain how it affects the rest of the, the design, but based on the report from Muser, and then the supplemental report, this is a non-starter. I mean, even if you put a lot of money in it, it poses a huge risk to the adjacent properties. The proposed construction here is slab-on-grade, no foundation, no big excavation, maybe a few feet just to put the slab, but they're not planning to go below the foundation levels of the adjacent properties, so there's not going to be underpinning. So this high water table is a really serious issue here, and it is unique. There are other buildings in the neighborhood that do have cellars, and it appears that this really is a remarkably exceptional site with the water table, and that has been demonstrated by Muser. The implications of that will be addressed by Ms. Gross, who's the architect and more of an engineering background, I'm happy to answer a question there.
What you're saying really doesn't agree with the geotechnical report, because it's not going to be a slab-on-grade, you're going to have spread footings. And your report actually says that those spread footings have to be located below the level of the adjacent foundations. And in fact, in your, part of your geotechnical report, which is, discusses foundation design, it said that it wasn't really certain what the level of the foundations were for the adjacent building, I believe it's the three-story to the south?
Okay.
And that it would need, they would need further investigation, and they would have to underpin, or at least go below those footings, and in that case, excavation of a cellar might be feasible, if you were going to have to, it's in your.
I'll, I'll review that myself, because when I was discussing with them what their conclusions were, which I, I thought I excerpted, the conclusions seemed to be contrary, but again, I'll defer to Ms. Gross to discuss more of the technical aspects of it, and we'll, we'll work with them. If we could do it, you know, if it's, if it's feasible, we will explore it. My understanding also, is in their supplementary report, was that to do that would cost another, at least $2.5 million, is what I understood.
That's to put a gymnasium in the cellar, which is, you know, 24, 26-foot deep excavation, that, that's not, we're talking about, you know, cellar floor, not a gymnasium.
Right, and this is about reducing the height of the building, for example?
Right, understood.
Drop it down a little deeper.
We have, we are exploring, based on your comments, ways that we could drop the height of the building, keeping it all above grade, without building either a basement or a cellar, because there are additional costs to this project, even by doing what I suspect you're proposing, makes it a much more expensive project for the not-for-profit. It is getting funding in part from some million, couple million dollars, four million dollars of, right now, from the borough president and the city council, who both wanted the project, is about an $18 million project without this additional below-grade feature. So if to, you know, it gets very expensive for a not-for-pro, for-profit to be able to do this, we don't have to, we're not in the realm of for-profits and having to show reasonable return, but the cost of doing that, the additional 10, 15% on costs, I think are going to be, even 10% would be, this is very burdensome. But we will explore it, Ms. Gross will address the, the report conclusions better than I can. With regard to height, we're definitely looking at ways we can reduce the floor-to-floor heights in the building to bring it down. With regard to programmatic need, we will provide, we thought we gave you maybe too much detail on the increased, the growth of Williamsburg, which is what's fueling this project in, in, in the main. If Williamsburg were dying, and people were moving out, and it was becoming an empty neighborhood, they wouldn't need a, a better facility. Right now, they serve about 700 to 1,300 people a year, and they think their demand is at least 3,500 as of 19, 2016. So that's based on population growth, Williamsburg is already, in this community board, has already grown four times the rate of the city in its population, in large part due to the rezoning that, overall, Williamsburg. Ironically, this neighborhood was downzoned at the same time. In 2006, before 2006 downzoning, the R6 district allowed 4-point FAR, which would have made this proposal as a right. this proposal as a right in terms of floor area. When it was downzoned, the community board knew that the SSA was planning to build a building to serve its needs, a larger building to serve its needs, and said in its community board resolution that they would entertain this variance application because they knew the community needed it. In fact, the community board followed through on that and gave us an approval, both at the committee and the full board level, approving this project. More details about the population growth and the need, we've put a lot of details, I think maybe we need to present it in a way that's more digestible for the board, but the need is there, both in terms of population statistics, anecdotal, registration for programs that are, people can't get into because there aren't enough spots, the need from the public schools to use the facility in order to fulfill their own needs of the Department of Education.
I think part of the issue was that, when you talk about the general growth of the area, how you tie that general growth into what the specific population who might be using this facility is in terms of that, what percentage of the population, like how you figure that you're going to have 3,500 people or something who are participating in the program, where do those numbers come from?
Okay.
And if you arrive there?
Okay, we'll work on presenting a more substantiation for the numbers themselves.
And that's sort of ditto for kind of assuming the classroom use, where you're talking about providing all of these facilities for the local public schools, how are you calculating how many classrooms you need and how many children that's providing for? And then if it's adult programs, and how are you calculating when, you know, sort of when do the children occupy, when do the adults occupy, how is this working? Because ultimately, you don't have that many classrooms, they're very large. So kind of what's going on in there? It's very hard to understand what goes on in those spaces. The walls are movable, so sometimes it becomes sort of an auditorium. I mean, and there seems like so many different programs that you're discussing and not that many rooms in which these programs can be taking place. So, we need to understand an actual schedule and how many people are being accommodated with that.
I'm sure that some of the staff at SSA will be pleased to hear you ask that because some of them spent a lot of time creating this big chart, how the place would be used. And I went, oh my God, they're not going to want to see that. And I said, we spent all this time, so now, now you want it?
You have to establish programmatic need.
So, we will, they'll be delighted to hear that you've requested that and will be happy to provide how the rooms will be used and how that relates to the other items, you know, the school needs and how many students they anticipate. In, you know, sort of tying this back to the Cornell, this clearly something provided, a facility that provides gymnasium classrooms, senior care programs, and so on, adult education is providing for health, welfare of the community. Relative to the neighborhood character, I know we're asking for a lot, both in terms of floor area and in terms of height. The need is there. There is really no space that a community facility like this can move to, that they could afford to pay for, to provide this amount of service. If there were, you know, another 100-foot lot, 100-by-50 lot next door, they would clearly be looking to buy it. My guess is some developer who could outprice them, outpay them, would get the site instead of them. It's unfortunate, it's a great thing for the city's growth that it were vibrant and vital, but it's really a hard situation for community facilities and not-for-profits to be competing and against market-rate developers that way. So this is the asset they have to develop. It's why they're squeezing it up and can't squeeze it flat. Relative to other buildings in the neighborhood, it is on the high end, it's not alone, and even in the 400-foot radius, we provided that 400-foot radius with heights of buildings pretty close, you know, in that area. Ones to the west are shorter, there's no doubt, ones to the east tend to be taller. We're on the tall side, but there are 110-foot, 82-foot building, 74-foot just on the next block. We will provide photographs as requested and we will also identify the heights of some of the buildings to the east that are lower, so you can see the comparison. This was to show heights, not to show shorts.
And also, you know, your lower roof is shown as only 77 feet high.
Right.
Not really an 89-foot-high building.
We agree.
Right, so, yeah.
So it's a 77 up with parts of it up.
With bumps.
With bumps.
I mean, what are the bumps for, by the way? What is that classroom on the roof?
Well, the classroom on the roof is going to serve a couple of purposes. One is that the, this is such an ironic thing, if you want kids to play on the roof outdoors, because it's really healthy for kids to be outdoors, and again, not a lot of space outdoors for kids to play in, then you have to put a fence around it. So rooftop, which would not be floor area, by putting a fence that's the height required by the Department of Education to keep the kids from, I guess, jumping over or for them the balls to be flying over, it's under the zoning, becomes floor area. So we have 870 feet on the roof, that's floor area, but not, no roof on it. It's just peculiar, I can't, that's what the book says. So, there's this play area outside, and so in the first instance, that room can be used as part of the staging for, you know, if you're going to be bringing stuff up and they need a place to gather for the kids before they go out on the roof, that room is, you know, supplements the outdoor use. And also, if it's raining and the other spaces in the building, after-school programs, for example, the other, the gym is going to be used by some gym-related program, a basketball team, a soccer team taking practice, whatever, a drama class happening in the auditorium that's slash gymnasium, when the kids were supposed to be up on the roof. Well, the kids can't then go into the gym because it's already programmed, so this room on the roof would serve to help in that kind of flexibility with the recreational needs of the children. In addition, it provides another venue where there can be a class, a meeting, a presentation, whether it's the community board having a committee meeting there while something else is going on in another room, it gives a little bit more elbow room. One of the things I want to, I want to mention this is that, to some extent, we, sort of an irony of applying for something today that you want to last for another 100 years. SSA was founded over 100 years ago. This building has been serving for over 100 years. Recently, not very well. But ideally, they would be able to build a building that would have a little flexibility. Everything wouldn't be to the T for today, but would give them a little bit of elbow room to be flexibility for the future. So, they can, they're programmed to go in that room, classes, whatever, today, but it also provides for some flexibility in the future. As I said, we're gonna, I just want to close before turning this over to first Amy Gross, the architect, and then John D. Rienzo, who's the chairman of the School Settlement Association, would like to address you briefly on the programmatic need. We have a few speakers who will come in on the public session and Mr. Roachford certainly can answer your question about the Board of Education. With regard to the height and the character of the community, if you look at the, think of the community facility building, the school settlement center, as if it were a church or a school, a central community facility institution, even though it doesn't have a steeple like a church, a steeple serves to be a beacon to the community. People know where it is, they can see it, they understand there's a community organization or institution there. And SSA is the institution in this neighborhood that builds community. It's there for community board meetings, for other meetings, for, it's a building where children can be educated and grow in a healthy environment, where adults can be engaged and constantly renew themselves. So this building is actually creating, helping to create neighborhood context, not only in a physical way, but in a social way. It is creating neighborhood context. And so for it to be more visible than other buildings in the, than many of the other buildings in the community, actually makes sense from a mission viewpoint. I'm not alone in saying this, as an advocate for my client, and my client itself is not alone in saying, oh, we should be able to be a bigger building, taller, have more floor area than allowed. I have here that we will be submitting 1,400 signatures on a petition in support of this application, and the cover letter says on it, "In all instances, I support the variances. The proposed floor area of the building is needed to provide the necessary classroom and meeting spaces in the community. The proposed height is due in large part to having a gym auditorium on the upper floor and would be more than current zoning allows. However, it is still in context with the surrounding community and notes the importance of the community facility. The gymatorium is needed to meet legal standards for recreation uses and functioning as an important educational institution. We urge you to approve the requested variances set forth in SSA's applications." 1,400 signatures. Three elected officials, Assemblyman Lentall and Tavilla, both have agreed to this. City Council Antonio Reynoso has signed a letter, I have all their letters, plus 13 other community groups support this application. So, I as the advocate am not alone and/or as the client alone in saying that this institution should be a beacon to the community and should be able to take advantage of the variance that you're able to give in order to let the community have the facility that it needs, whether you view it as an educational institution and not-for-profit, some hybrid. We can meet the findings and the variance should be granted. I'd like to turn this over.
There's some, we have some questions, I think, that are still for you. One of them is about the rooftop recreation area and how the noise will be mitigated, because I'm just assuming taller nevertheless, sound travels and so on, and how that's going to be addressed. You don't have to know the answer right now.
We actually talked about that and there are some noise attenuation measures that can be taken to, in the netting, in the fencing. One of the things we're discussing is that if that noise attenuation material is brought to the entire height, then that would be more visible, even though it's set back, we want to look at the visibility of that. So, lower level, probably easy to say that it's not going to be visible from the street. We have to explore the higher level and then that would be something to discuss with you, whether the noise attenuation should go all the way and basically create a wall, or if there's some way to integrate it at the lower level that would be effective. So we are looking, are going to look at the noise.
But you're working with the environmental consultant on this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because you may not need to attenuate, there may be ways to attenuate, without building a wall around the play area.
We'll get expert advice on noise attenuation.
And then also, one of the requests was when you're making your argument about the obsolete building, you talked about it in terms of programmatic need, which we can understand, but you also made statements about the building not being up to code, for example, that a lot of the school programs pulled out because it wasn't up to code, but you didn't say what wasn't up to code.
Well, there's an extensive report that Amy Gross Architects prepared. If we didn't submit it, we will submit it, but there's some seri, it was built in 1904? The building was built in 1904, we didn't even have a code. The stairways are narrow, I mean, we couldn't go through it, but we do have that material. I'm providing for you.
Okay, it's kind of the stairways are narrow, but what's the requirement for stairways? It could even be a chart.
Right, okay.
Something simple like that.
Right.
To make clear, this is the reason that it's impossible to renovate this building and it wouldn't help anyway because.
Right. Very well.
Other questions for?
Just following up a little bit on the roof, could you also talk about nighttime use? If it's ever going to be used at night, then what kind of lighting are you proposing up on the roof?
We've never talked about that. We talked about the building itself closing at like 11 o'clock, what time? 10 o'clock at night. So if the building's closed at 10, the roof will be closed at 10. I don't know if there's any intention to use the roof, like in the summertime until that hour, but we'll discuss that and let you know. It's not our intention, it's our intention to be a good neighbor and we don't want to disturb the adjacent property owners. We know that they are very concerned about how our building will impact them and we were, we're not only going to look at insulating the, that rooftop rec area for the kids, but already built into the plan is insulation of the walls and the elevator, having a kind of elevator that doesn't vibrate, so it's not as, it won't be an imposition on the neighbors. Again, Ms. Gross can address some of that.
Yeah, because you'll be, I'm sure you'll be using that rooftop enclosed area, the one that's actually within the building.
Right.
And it's got a full wall of windows.
We'll look into that and maybe we'll include some other treatment of the wall, so it doesn't bother neighbors.
Okay, and then maybe, and I don't know whether the architect can, should be answering this or not, but then I also had questions concerning whether or not it was possible to perhaps go down two, three feet to start to lessen the height of the building, understanding that you have some subsurface issues, but that perhaps looking at the gym itself being on the first floor level or depressed a bit, and then I'm also asking why the second and the third floors and the first floor have 18-foot floor-to-floor heights? That given that you've only got a 24-foot ceiling height in your gym, you're coming awfully close for just an office space on the first or second floor.
That's when I said earlier that we're looking at whether we can lower some of the floor-to-floor heights, that's the floor that we were looking at in particular. The first three floors may have some room to drop. I found this very interesting, I hadn't thought about it. The size of the gym is pursuant to guidelines from the School Construction Authority, and we have a 50-by-100 site. And it's sort of, we're already kind of squeezing those regulations, we don't, we wouldn't be having basketball in their dream, the dream gym has two basketball nets either end lengthwise, but also two on either side, and then you have to have like padding on the wall, so people who, if it were me, would just keep running to the wall. We don't have that width, we don't have enough width to do all of that, we're doing part of that. Since we need that whole footprint of the building, the 50-by-100 to provide that space, we can't do it on the ground at grade because there would be no lobby then, you'd just walk right into a gym. And so, the location of the gym can't be on the first floor entrance when you walk in. Ideally, it would have been below, 100% below grade because then you get it out of the way. You also need a space that has clear, Ms. Gross is much more competent at this than I am, but I was really intrigued by it. You need, you can't have columns in the middle of the basketball court, so you need to be in a space that doesn't have to support, you know, is designed in a way that doesn't really need supporting to support another floor. So, the roof is the option. And that's actually written into the SCA's guidelines, is that optimally it's either below or the top for those various reasons. So, the location is really a tricky thing and was very seriously explored.
Yeah, it just seemed to me that perhaps you had the possibility of actually getting it lower, plus, you know, using the building, you think of kids going to the gym and you don't necessarily want them sort of running through the entire building to get to the gym, you'd rather have them close at hand to be able to see what's going on. And so, buildings of this type typically would have the gym either in the, you know, in a basement or on the first floor, just for the ability to keep track of who's in the building.
Commissioner, you're absolutely right, and if the plot were bigger, they'd certainly be doing that, but the plot is just the size, like the minimum that they can do this kind of gym size that meets the minimum regulations, so that's not an option. But in terms of kids running around the building, there will be a welcome desk, the stairs that go upstairs are within clear view of the welcome desk, so are the elevators. So if there were kids that started like aimlessly wandering around, the staff in the building would be cognizant of it and can direct them to go up to their program on the, in the gymnasium floor. So your point is well-taken, but the site constraints just don't permit that kind of flexibility here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to, most of all, thank you all for your attention and thoughtfulness about the program. If there are any other materials or formats that you think we should be presenting material in, either tell us here or through Josh or, excuse me, Mr. Saul or Mr. Bean can share that with us, because we'd like to make this as digestible an application as possible.
That does actually bring up, so you made reference to the SCA regulations about the size of the gym, but, and you provided in your materials some cuts from the SCA, I don't know, it was like a summary.
Guidelines, yeah.
Doesn't actually give you any dimensional information, it just says it's nice if this is next door to this. We actually do need the criteria for the sizes of the gym.
We'll do that.
And that'll help us understand better what you're talking about, because in fact, the lobby at the gym level is almost the same size as the lobby at the first floor level, so if we just talked about not being able to have a lobby. So if we just talked about not being able to have a lobby, you have a lobby on the two floors. And it's, this is more of a programmatic question. It's the school or the settlement association is the one that would determine its programmatic needs, whether it's at the lower floor or the upper floor, which you could support with more information about why the gym is located where it is. Because we actually see gyms in both places, in schools, right? So in schools, right? So oftentimes, the school has the gym on the top and then the rooftop recreation right next to it, because they're doing other things on the ground floor, but then, or maybe they have the auditorium on the ground floor and they're separate, which is a different thing, right? They're rarely combined like that.
Well, in this case, we have a combined gym and auditorium, but we will articulate why the programmatic need of this institution is to put the gym at the top, close to that recreational space on the roof, as opposed to on the bottom with an auditorium type of option at the bottom. Your point is well taken that there's a lobby in both, but I'm sure there's a reason why the lobby up there is...
We'll find out.
We'll figure it out. We'll find out from Ms. Gross. If not here, then we'll supply that. I also want to take this opportunity to welcome the new chair and to congratulate Commissioner on her actuals.
Do you mind if I just pick up where you just left off with Ms. Harris?
Absolutely anywhere you want.
Please state your name for the reference. Certainly. My name is Amy Gross, and I am president of Amy Gross Architects. Hi. Just to address this issue about the gymnasium and its location, my firm specializes in the design of affordable buildings. And what we've learned over the years is that whenever you design a building, you're taking into account, to make that building affordable, all the varied issues that contribute to the cost. The issue of gyms is that they're column-free spaces. So to put a gymnasium, in addition to all the other criteria that Ms. Harris addressed, at the ground floor means that you're having a column-free space, which means all the loads up above would then have to go through transfer beams to be able to keep that space column-free. The expense of the transfer beams and the depth of the transfer beams would actually end up making the building more expensive and would make the building taller. Relative to circulation issues, you know, settlement houses are a very interesting building type that unfortunately are not built that often anymore, but there's a significant, significant need for them. And there is, when you look at the history of settlement housing design, which is a type in and of itself, there are, it's all really based about crowd control. It's very interesting, because the intent is, is that you're providing services to children, to seniors, and then to adults after work. So the idea is to try to spread out those high-volume uses throughout the building. So by having the gymnasium at the top floor...
Please take the microphone with you, so it picks up. I'm sorry.
So by having a gymnasium at the top floor, where you're going to have, if you have a typical basketball game, and you have both teams and parents and onlookers, that's a significant number of people. You also have a significant number of people that are going in and out of the building. So based on that, the part of the iconographic look of the building is the staircase that brings people, people come into the building, and then they traverse through the building. And we chose to make that circulation path a part of the look of the building. It also fits with the mission, in a sense, of this community facility, which is to increase fitness. So the idea is that this stair, which is wider and deeper and filled with light, is all about promoting people to use that vehicle, as opposed to using the elevator to get from place to place. So on many levels, we feel, from a cost standpoint, an aesthetic standpoint, operationally, and in terms of crowd control, that's an ideal location. And clearly, we'd be happy to give you any more information on that.
No, that answered my question. You're actually separating the big uses, the ones that generate the most people.
Exactly.
So you're separating them out and forcing one group to actually go to one end of the building and then up.
You said it much better than me. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Yes, absolutely.
And then, since you're talking circulation, could you talk about the horizontal circulation? There's a lot of it.
Certainly. Yes, yes. Just to use...
Microphone, microphone.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have a typical floor plan here, but basically, because the building is such a small floor plate, the site itself is less than 50 feet by 100. The typical school building would be a double-loaded corridor. So you'd have a corridor in the center, and then that would feed rooms on either side. We don't have the luxury of that kind of circulation, so we have a single circulation spine that feeds the various rooms and offices and classrooms and other kinds of uses. We know anecdotally, from having spent a lot of time over the past few years at other settlement houses, YMCA's and SSA in particular, that you have a mix of people. So you could very often have a situation where you have people in a wheelchair, children in strollers, and a group of kids that are coming into the classroom simultaneously. So we chose the single-loaded corridor because we had no other choice, but we decided to make that circulation path as easy as possible. Could we go back and maybe take a foot out of it? Perhaps. But the intent was, is acknowledging the fact that this is a very high-traffic area with a lot of different kinds of things, and we didn't want three-year-olds in daycare centers to get run down by strollers and wheelchairs and such, that we made that decision. But as I said, we could certainly go back and revisit it. But in terms of the efficiency of the building, it's, the only way it really works is to have a single-loaded corridor. So it's not what we're used to seeing. I can understand how it would be off-putting.
So just to understand that a little bit in terms of how it's working. So for instance, on the ground floor, there's a pretty large lobby area, and then this large, single-loaded corridor on the street side of the building.
The opposite of the street side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, it's actually on the street side, no?
So they have classrooms, and the other ones are fronting on Jackson.
Oh, they're fronting the street. Oh, I have, okay, in the back, okay. So, and I see, I think on every floor, you have toilet rooms, right?
Correct.
So the idea is that you're having people of all different mixes in terms of how this program works, coming and going at the same time?
Well, I think the issue is, as Ms. Harris was saying earlier, is that you're designing the settlement house to be as flexible as possible. There is no way today, sitting here in a design development phase, that we know exactly what's going to happen, but it seems prudent to design the building to have the most amount of flexibility. So for example, as you can see on the ground floor, we can make that space one space, or we can divide it into four classrooms, or we can divide it into two classrooms. So the idea is it's potentially, for example, in the evening, you could have a class of teenagers doing one thing, you could have senior citizens going to some event, you could have a community board meeting going on. So yes, the intent is, and again, historically, we've seen this, that there's a significant amount of traffic. Our firm did the master plan for Lenox Hill Neighborhood House, which again is another settlement house. And at any given time, the nature of what makes a settlement house special, different than a Y, for example, is that it is serving so many different people, doing so many different kinds of activities. So we were very cognizant of that in how we designed the building.
Okay, thanks. And then in terms of the size of the rooms.
Very interesting.
Yeah, okay.
The challenge of this building is, as I was saying, we have a very small footprint of the building, which is obviously the full-lock coverage, which has to reflect three very, very distinct regulations. One is obviously the Building Code of the City of New York. The other is the regulations that are set by the Department of Health for daycare. Daycare is different than pre-K, and it's different than the School Construction Authority regulations, which govern buildings that are constructed by the Board of, the Department of Education. So for example, when you're designing daycare, you are limited by age to the number of children that can occupy a room, and the room size is dependent on the number of children. So for example, if you have two-year-olds in a daycare room, you can only have a maximum of seven two-year-olds, and you have to have two teachers. And each one of those children, I don't know off the top of my head, results in a room of the size that you see. So the idea is we could have double the amount of children and half the amount of space if we compare the SCA regulations for classroom to the Department of Health. Hence, the notion of these movable walls. So for example, you could have a licensed daycare center in the morning, and you could have an SCA, Department of Education, after-school program in the afternoon. And I will point out, as architects who design facilities for non-for-profits, there's also another layer that gets put onto this, which is funding. The funding that you get from the Department of Health for running a licensed daycare center can be greater than you could get from another program. So it seemed appropriate to be able to design the building to accommodate all these various licensing requirements, so that it wouldn't preclude them not being able to get that funding. And having done daycare, it's an extremely, extremely strict requirement.
Interesting. So...
Interesting, right?
You're still using, then, in a certain way, the highest common denominator to decide on the room size, even though sort of the adult activities wouldn't need a room that big.
Exactly. However, as you can see on the first floor, for example, as you were pointing out, and also on the second floor, is that we can have a minimum of four rooms, and we could also look at eating, using yet another different kind of movable partition that would allow us to make it even smaller than that. And that would be part of the program development. But we had to design it this way, because structurally, obviously, we have to carry that load, and we need to know where our bearing walls are and where our columns are going to be located. But it is, I mean, it's a very complicated building type in terms of all of the relevant codes.
What else were we talking about?
You also talk...
So the floor-to-floor height issue.
Yes.
You could talk about that.
Sure. So again, we go back to constraints. Just simply put, if we start from the top of the building down, at the fourth floor where our gymnasium is located, as Ms. Harris was saying earlier, the gymnasium was designed to meet the regulations of the School Construction Authority for high school, which means that you can have varsity games, and you can have police athletic league games, and it allows you to participate in various competitions, which this community does not have now, which is a real, which is a real issue. And we will show you the diagrams from the School Construction Authority, and they use, actually, the National Basketball Association regulations. We've become a real expert in basketball in this job. It requires a clear height of 24 feet before the first obstruction. So that means to the underside of the structure and to the underside of the mechanical. Again, because of the number of people that use the building, where our ductwork is significant, because the building is obviously heated and cooled 18 hours a day, and the intent is to give us the most amount of flexibility, is that we're going to run our systems all through the ceiling. Obviously, we'll have a certain amount of risers, but all of everything will be run horizontally, minimally vertically. So if you take that 24 feet, and then you have another three feet for the structure, you end up with the height of the gymnasium. Now, as it relates to the other floors, on the first and second floor, School Construction Authority requires 10 feet to the first obstruction in a classroom. And there's two issues there. Is that 10 feet in a classroom that is 500 square feet, that they could accommodate 30 or 35 children, is an okay height? If you start to get, if that room, on the other hand, starts to be larger, as some of our rooms are, the 10-foot height starts to feel really, really low. So we made the decision to make these rooms have a taller ceiling for the reason of the current program. But as Ms. Harris was saying earlier, part of what is so rewarding about working on settlement houses is that they were, when they were designed 100 years ago, and, you know, there were hundreds of settlement houses at the turn of the century, doing almost exactly what we're going to be doing here, they understood that the kinds of services they offered 100 years ago were not going to be the services that are going to be offered today. By having a higher ceiling, it allows us to, for example, if you were doing a elementary school program of athletics, you could do it in one of these classrooms. You wouldn't have to go to the gym, because you're not doing high school basketball. If you were doing some gymnastics program, it would allow you to do it. So our hope was to make the ceilings as tall as possible, so we would have that flexibility in terms of the programming. Having said all that, clearly, height is an issue here, and we can look at that. For the offices, you can see our office floor-to-floor height is four feet less than it is on the first and the second floor, and we can certainly look at that. But again, the offices are using mostly modular furniture, and the industry standard is a 10-foot ceiling height. And we wanted, we wanted, again, to have the flexibility in terms of the mechanical distribution.
Well, so for example, if you were using those lower rooms for some kind of sport activity...
Right.
Then there's probably a minimum height for that, if that became, say, a dance room or something.
These industry standards are not code regulations, but there's certainly industry standards we can give you, yes?
So if you could...
Absolutely, sure.
It's all about standards.
I hear you.
Standard generally.
Sure.
Right.
Yep. And it's interesting, because each one of these sports and activities, like gymnastics, has their own trade association that has their own regulations that ends up becoming the industry standard, because it's not a code, so it becomes the code.
Right. Okay.
I think that's... Do you want me to talk? I shouldn't volunteer this, but if you have any questions specific to the water table, I'm happy to talk about that relative to the foundation and such, because Commissioner Montanez, you had asked about that.
Well, one of the reasons why I brought that up, because in building design here, it seems that there's very little storage space, and there's no place to put the trash. And I know you have an alleyway now where you have two dumpsters.
Certainly.
And I just thought even a partial cellar stepped away from the adjacent buildings, where you could just sit on the ceiling, would be very useful.
It would be very useful.
It would be the flexible program.
Right. This is the issue. You know, as I said, I'm very happy with the fact that our client agree with our recommendation to higher muso relage, because I really consider them the foremost geotech engineers, not only in New York, but in the country. Just as an aside, they're the geotech engineers for the Verrazano Bridge. And we've been regaled with great stories about the bed of the Hudson River. But putting that aside, there was a very, very small, just a few hundred-square-foot partial cellar in this original building, and because of that partial cellar, the building is not handicapped accessible, and that, that partial cellar only goes down three or four feet, and to currently enter the building, you have to go up the stairs and over that hump, if you will, to get into the building. Based on, and that, again, was 100 years ago. We don't know the thickness of the wall, but muso supposition is, is that the floor slab and the thickness of those walls is allowed for the hydrostatic pressure of the water pressure, because it's probably likely, because this building never had a cellar other than this small space, they too knew that there was a high water table here, though because of climate change and such, the water table in New York is rising considerably. So the issue is, is once you start to put, to de-water the site and accommodate the very, very high hydrostatic pressure of the high water table, the costs then get triggered. So we, once we made, once it was determined that we had this very high water table and the costs were evaluated, it did not make sense to us to go ahead and to spend that kind of money, because, on many, many levels. For example, when they did, they were there for two weeks, doing all different kinds of flood tests, and not only testing relative to the high water table, but also the soils, which have a very, very bad bearing capacity, is that they saw fluctuations just after what we would consider a minimal rain. And they can't even account for seasonal variation. So the, the water table, as shown on the borings, is at nine feet, but the industry standard for design regulations in designing buildings with high water tables is to add another two feet. So from a design standpoint, we have a seven-foot-high water table. Any excavation we would be doing, then, would therefore be going into that water table. That cost and the liability is enormous, because until you're actually on the site, as we all know, you know, you can take every test on earth, and you can move two inches away, and there can be a whole other series of information that hits you. Did not seem to make it worth it. Relative to issues of storage, garbage disposal, and all of that, we feel that the building has enough flexibility in terms of its structure that we can accommodate that. So for example, we show a mechanical room on the ground floor of 195 square feet. Our systems are all going to be on the roof. We're going to have to have some service entries coming into the building, but we don't need 195 square feet. So we could have garbage storage in that, what is currently called a mechanical room, and it was never intended that the garbage would go out through the lobby, it would go out through that secondary means of egress directly onto Jackson. But this, the water table is a very interesting issue, because as Ms. Harris was saying, there is a high... there is a high water table in general in Williamsburg because of its proximity to the water. But this site, in a very odd way, literally, this envelope of this site has a high water table significantly higher than the others, because adjacent properties do have below-grade space.
Do you have any additional geological data-
We have a very, very, of the area, yeah. Interestingly-
Does that is the case?
Yes, absolutely. Musor has done-
Is Musor saying that it's because of the clays and it's a perfect water table?
You know, I don't want to say the wrong thing, I believe so, but I would, I can give that to you, but happily, because they've been in business for 140 years, and they keep everything, they can show you historically how the, the water table in the area and how it has changed. But, you know, just in light of what we're all dealing with, with mitigation, this is a, it's a very serious issue.
Well, when you do talk about doing the excavation on the perimeter-
Right.
-for your footings.
Right.
You already are sort of creating some excavation from the cellar level. Why wouldn't you just say-
Well, we're not really, because all we are, you know, I, if you're interested, what we brought with us is another diagram showing where that designed water table would be, and just schematically where the foundations would fall. And I have copies of that I could leave with you, or-
That'd be great, yeah, please.
But basically, we would be using a, a pier foundation here. So we'd be running our outside walls right alongside our property line, probably about two feet thick, and the amount of area that would actually, let me just give you, hold on, hold on. It's better to use, I have copies, hold on. For everybody. Go ahead, everyone? By having a pier foundation, we have actually a very, very minimal of excavation. It would just be along the length of the, of the property line walls, and it would be about two feet thick. What that would mean is we would have localized de-watering. We wouldn't actually be excavating. So we would probably hand dig out along, along those property line walls. So we're not really making excavated space, and the idea is by doing, by minimizing the amount of foundation wall, we, we could be able to de-water in a slow way, as opposed to a true excavation, which is where you're building a slab three or four feet thick to keep back the water and the hydrostatic pressure from it. But if you see in that diagram I gave you, you see that seven-foot design line of the water table, and then you see diagrammatically how that pier foundation would run along the side of the building.
Then we'll have to go to at least the level of the adjacent foundation.
Yes. But the idea is no underpinning, as Ms. Harris was saying, would be required, because we wouldn't be going below that level of the foundation. And we've shown you the absolute worst-case basis. We don't exactly know the bottom of the foundation of our neighbors, but we've shown it here in scale to 10 feet, which I would imagine is more than sufficient. But the idea is we would be meeting that, we'd be meeting that line.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else from, from these associations to speak? Yeah?
Paige, I have to put my glasses on.
Okay. You can tell us your name while you put your glasses.
My name is John Darianzo. I'm a lifelong resident of the Williamsburg-Greenpoint community. I'm also the board president of the School Settlement Association. The visionaries who started the School Settlement Association in the early 1900s planned properly and designed a building that served the community for well over 100 years. The legacy of the settlement house is that of being the magnet for children, families, and seniors to enrich their lives in a facility dedicated to the people of our community. Over 1,300 people come to our programs weekly. Responding to the rapid population growth in the area, we saw the local population grow at four times the rate of New York City between 2000 and 2010, the board of the School Settlement Association began to plan for a new facility. We also found that many families were having to put, having to be put on waiting lists for our summer camp and for our after-school programs. The neighborhood also has four schools within a few blocks of 120 Jackson Street that have no proper recreation facilities for their students. Design we have submitted will allow SSA to provide a quality recreational and classroom supplement for the children at our partner school, PS 132. It will also provide the recreational after-school missing in our community. I am asking the members of this committee to see the need for this new facility. Times change, buildings need to be, to expand, the basic core services and families we serve do not change. 100 years from now, we will be the visionaries who help numerous future generations enjoy a facility dedicated to the betterment of the children of our community. I am proud to be a member of this project and fully support the design presented before this committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this side? Do you want to say something else?
There are.
Paul Bush speak that, there. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
Liam.
Oh, Mr. Rob Quach.
Oh, it's another person from the association? Okay, I'm sorry. No, three minutes, or no? No, no, he's with the- Association, okay. With the applicant.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Rochford, Executive Director of St. Nick's Alliance, as well as Executive Director of the School Settlement Association. I'm here to address any questions you might have about our education program and our relationships with the Department of Education. You've heard from several speakers today that four of the schools in the radius surrounding the center have no gyms, and only one has an auditorium. One of the schools was built in 1860 as a Civil War hospital, and it's incredible in this day and age, and that schools in our neighborhood are so lacking in facilities, it really pries out for the need for decent indoor recreational space. Our closest school partner is PS 132, which is about two blocks from the facility. We've been working with that school for better on eight years now. Our major focus is in the area of after-school, which is really an extended-day program focused on literacy and youth development. We also do STEM. We have a wonderful partnership with the Joan Mitchell Foundation, provides us with an artist-in-residence in our after-school program, and another partnership with the Jackman Family Foundation, which enables us to do literacy for families in the evening after, after-school hours, to get families more engaged in both school as well as in reading, which is a building block for education. Research indicates that children that benefit from after-school do far better in school over time than children that do not have access to after-school. So after-school is a major focus of our work. We serve over 2,000 children in our community, and 1,000 children in an education-oriented summer camp program, including at this school, this facility at 120 Jackson Street. In addition, with the PS 132, which I mentioned is only two blocks away, we've experimented with an extended-day program in, into the school day. We ran that as a test for about six months. However, one of the UFT teachers from the school complained about the decrepit conditions within the facility, and we had to bring the experiment to an end. At one time, the Department of Education did pay for the use for the gym, but as that project came to an end, or the issues with regards to the teachers' concerns about the facility, unfortunately, we were not able to continue. As was mentioned earlier by Ms. Harris, we don't have an agreement, nor could we secure a written agreement from the Department of Ed for a building yet unbuilt. However, it isn't our intent, and we have a letter of support, which I believe was in our package, from the school principal of PS 132, that we'd like to continue that relationship, and again, be able to offer the 700 children within that school, which is completely at capacity, and again, without a gym or without an auditorium, to be able to have access to our facility during the school day.
Okay. So if we could just talk about that a little bit more. So you were saying you're involved with other public schools, have been involved with other public schools in the neighborhood, and, and if we just talk about this idea that you're designing this facility, the facility will meet all of the code requirements of the School Construction Authority and of Department of Health and all the other regulatory bodies, and you went back to the Department of Ed with Ms. Gross, for example, and presented the project and said, "Here is our project. This is what we're building," and that way, they had a chance to have input on the design of the building, then, for one, you would be assured that your building will meet their requirements, because it would be just a shame if you went ahead and built it, and then they said, "Oh, no, actually, this isn't working for us at all," and so you're on your own, right? And so, curious about that. Why can't you do that?
Well, I think we designed the building, and Amy can explain this better than I did, to those specifications. We also did analyze the possibility of building adjoining one of the existing schools with the School Construction Authority, but that proved unfeasible because of the lack of space was even more limited than the space that we have at 120 Jackson Street. So we've designed a building that complies with those regulations, but if you can understand and appreciate the difficulty of getting the Department of Education involved in a project that's on their own land, getting them involved, as you suggest, in a project that's not on their own land is, is, is something that, I'm not sure we were able to really expend the effort to get them that involved in a project. But building to their specifications to the best that we're able within the space limitations, I think is a reasonable approach for us to take. And as I say, we did have children in the day, as a part of the school day, using the facility for some time, and it was only really on the issue of one teacher who raised concerns about the conditions of the building and the decrepit ancient building that we had to stop that program. So there was never a question that there was, we wouldn't be compliant with Department of Ed regulations. We are also regulated by the Department of Youth and Community Development, as well as the Health Department, and, and as I said, principals are really our partners in every one of our after-school centers, and we work very closely with them. So the notion of engaging School Construction Authority in, in the design process here was not something we thought was going to add any value to the, to the development.
It's not exactly engaging. I mean, you are saying that your programs are going to be meeting the needs of these public schools, and so, and a big part of the application, because it's a variance application, where ideally, because it just makes it an easier application, ideally, you, you demonstrate to the board that this is a school, or a school-related facility, right? So if, it seems odd to me that you wouldn't be meeting with the agencies that impose the regulations, meet with their, the, the architecture group, or the planning group that's in these agencies, and say, "This is what we're designing." You know, that's, I'm, I'm seeing lots of nodding over there, so.
I, I think with, with regard to school construction, I can't really respond beyond what I, what I just said, but we are very intimately involved in close working with the principals of our schools, and they're very engaged in the programming that we've developed. And as I mentioned before, we previously had a relationship in which we were compensated for the use of the space during the school day. So that level of detail is not something that we undertook. Do, does somebody else want to?
Yeah, okay.
Take that.
Thank you very much.
We will certainly endeavor to have a, a conversation with the appropriate DOE or SCA to see if they'll give us that meeting to review our proposal, and if we can meet, if we can get anything from writing, we'll let you know. We'll do our best.
I'm sure Ms. Gross would appreciate a little input from the people who are ultimately going to-
Approve the-
Approve it, fund it, whatever.
Absolutely. So, so we'll, we'll make our best efforts to do that. I think it's a great suggestion, and if it makes this application easier, I'm all for it. So I, I just can't promise the delivery, because it's dependent on-
Sure.
On them.
Yes, but you can-
We'll do our best to do that.
Right, okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
Were there other questions? Thank you very much. Are there any speakers from the public on this?
Please state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Sure. My name is Patty Hausman. I live right there. So, well, obviously, affect me, but, and I'm a super nervous public speaker, so you guys just, please be patient. I do want to address what, Mr., is it Mr. Rochford? PS 132 just underwent a full renovation in 2013. They have an auditorium that seats 250 people. They have an outdoor play space, and I would imagine if they wanted a regulation basketball court, they would have built themselves one. I'm just kind of putting that out there. We also have McCarron Park for regulation basketball courts. And again, I've already addressed the auditorium. I do also want to, and I'm completely off, I had a little script, but I, I want to kind of address some of the things that came up. I also want to address a couple of things from their mission statement. St. Nick, St. Nick's Alliance and School Settlement, part of their mission statement from their nonprofit status include neighborhood preservation services and includes services for low and middle-income families. Neighborhood preservation services, I would argue, fall under figuring out a way to save their building.
Sorry, figuring out a way to do what?
To save the building that they have right now. I mean, I would also argue, back to what PS 132, PS 132 is as old or older than the school settlement house, yet they managed to work with an architect, oh, by the name of Tenetti Associates, to work within the confines of the building that they have, and they won the approval of the New York State Historic Preservation Office. So old buildings, old large buildings, old school buildings can obviously be preserved with, with the right touch. I also kind of want to point out, and again, this is specific to me rather than the neighborhood, but, for example, right here, elevator A.
Take the microphone with you.
Oh, sorry. You know what? Right there at elevator A, that's where the headboard of my bed is. The, the elevator is going to be going up and down where I sleep at night. So the gymnasium, and I'm seeing these plans for the first time, this is the first time I've been at a community meeting. We already have a level of noise, or used to have a level of noise from their gymnasium in the basement. When our windows were open, we would absolutely hear the noise coming up from whatever sports we're playing, typically basketball. I can't imagine it's going to be any quieter unless there's not going to be a single window open bellowing out over the neighborhood. I'm just a little, I'm a little bit taken aback by this, because it's really the first time I'm seeing it. You know, I just want to point out that, and I'll wrap it up. Our neighborhood doesn't really suffer from the lack of services that St. Nick's is, is discussing, and I pointed out a couple of ulterior, you know, basketball courts, et cetera, but we are really suffering from the risk of overdevelopment in the neighborhood, and that's what R6B means to confine, so. Sorry, thank you, guys. Sorry, I was so nervous.
Thank you. You did fine. Perfect. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Scott Sirota. I live in the neighborhood. 114 Jackson Street, built in 1901, is the oldest continually operated settlement house in Brooklyn. The structure has served our community for more than four generations. This is the building that inspired the author of A Tree Grows in Brooklyn. This is the house that Jane Adams, an American pioneer, built with her life's work. They want to build a four-story-plus penthouse community facility, which does not comply with our R6B zoning. R6B zoning preserves the scale and harmonious streetscapes of neighborhoods of four-story attached buildings, typical of brownstone neighborhoods. I find it interesting that we can't actually see a true rendering of what our buildings look like next to this. They're just sort of clouds, grayed out. I'd like to really see like a photographic representation, because I can tell you that this towers over the neighborhood. And in fact, it does completely, as any resident will tell you, alter the essential character of not only the block, but radius the entire neighborhood. It's been a fixture in our neighborhood for more than a century. It's a part of our history. A structure like this is irreplaceable. It's what keeps our neighborhood unique. There is a way to repurpose it while keeping the architectural integrity of the building intact, and I don't think we absolutely need to tear it down, especially to build a really risky proposition on a high-water table. But here's the most important part, maybe, that I can share with you today. Of the more than 50 buildings that St. Nick's Alliance manages in our immediate neighborhood, they've been served with more than 600 building violations. Yes. Here are some of the highlights. 605 Manhattan Avenue, 60 Class B building violations, 20 Class A. 601 Manhattan Avenue, 37 Class B, 9 Class A. 248 Pulaski, 33 Class B, 17 Class A. 124 Graham, 25 Class B, 8 Class A. 1134 Manhattan, 24 Class B, 3 Class C, bedbugs in entire apartment. 324 Devoe, no heat reported in entire building. 1814, 21813, 21013, and 12613. So not in the '70s, but this past winter. 18 Stag Street, 14 Class B building violations, 6 Class A. Rear kitchen and bathroom floor rotted, sagging and defective. 733 Grand Street, no heat and no hot water reported in entire building, February 4th, 2013. 951 Manhattan, illegal certificate of occupancy, excavation undermining adjacent building, retaining wall at West Side removed causing undermining at 145 Java Street. No heat reported in entire building, 218, 2013. So the list goes on and on. Those are just some highlights, yet St. Nick's claims that it is, quote, "aimed at combating community deterioration." Yet, St. Nick's claims that it is, quote, "aimed at combating community deterioration and neighborhood preservation." More than 600 violations in the real world. It's fitting that St. Nick's Alliance actually removed the words "Neighborhood Preservation Corporation" from their company name in 2011. In February of 2013, while three of its buildings were simultaneously reporting no heat and no hot water, 324 Devoe, 951 Manhattan, 733 Grand, with 1134 Manhattan Avenue reporting, quote, "bedbugs in entire apartment," St. Nick's was allocating $500,000 to office expenses and paying its executive director more than $220,000 per year from the nonprofit.
Could you wrap up with your?
Sure. A simple search, just this building alone, this building received 11 DOB violations in just 12 years. It's had a broken fire escape for three months. This is what it looks like yesterday. There's a little sign on it. Says, "Please email us. This fire escape's broken." It's been broken for months. I agree, it's gotten to a decrepit state because the landlords are negligent. Lastly, I'm sorry, thank you for your time. A broken five-story fire escape addition, which has remained roped off for three months, illegal plumbing and electricity installations on the outside of the building where every day hundreds of children go to after-school programs. Should we reward an organization with more than 600 building violations in our community and let them break six of our zoning laws in an R6B zone, demolishing the original irreplaceable 1901 settlement house, the oldest continuously operating settlement house in Brooklyn, to create a rooftop penthouse gym-matorium that towers over the neighborhood?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else want to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Konstantin Trips and I live right next to the School Settlement Building. And yeah, I can see that you're overwhelmed with all this information that's presented to you and amazing drawings and all that and huge law firms step in to represent big development companies. And it all looks really nice and great in theory and on paper, but if you look at what it really is, it's really not so nice. They're tearing down a more than 100-year-old building and they're building a four-story building with a penthouse that they kind of want to look like it's for the community and for the kids, but it's not really. It's like a hybrid, that's what they call it. And I want you to understand that I teach at a public school in Bedford-Stuyvesant as part of a New York HERS program. That's a volunteer program. And I really am for kids and for gyms and all that. I understand that they need that. But this can be done in a different way. We don't have to destroy our history and what used to be good for generations. And then we let it like run down so that we can demolish it and rebuild it. I think that's not the way to go about it and maybe renovating it would be way cheaper for a nonprofit organization than building this huge four-story penthouse. And maybe the money that's saved can be used for different things, kids programs, whatever, after-school programs. Yeah, and I would like to ask you to please help our community and our neighborhood to protect our zoning codes because we need those zoning codes. They were put in place for a reason, to make sure that these companies can't just do whatever they want. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank Lang. I'm the Director of Housing at St. Nick's Alliance. I'm here to tell you the truth despite some of the other information you may have just heard. I came up to speak because we had two parents that came here to speak and were signed up, Ms. Kate York and Ms. Jeanette Sierra, and they both had to leave. So they send their regrets. They are among the 1,400 people that signed the petitions that you will get copies of. The information, first off, I'd like to talk about PS 132. Our agency met with the Tenetti Architects, the principal of PS 132, and the School Construction Authority to look at the possibility of doing an addition there. It was determined it was not feasible, that there were not sufficient outdoor play area if that was developed. In addition, the renovation of that building, there is no auditorium. The so-called 250-seat auditorium is the cafeteria slash gym slash auditorium space in that building. We will get you that information so you can get the facts rather than misinformation. I am appalled to be hearing that an organization that is lauded by HPD and HCR as being a leader in affordable housing and representing tenants is treated as if we do not and have not contributed to the benefit of this community. This building is in bad condition and does not meet code because it cannot. If it was not grandfathered in, we would not be able to run any programs funded by the City of New York in this building. The building already had in a two-story addition that destroyed the so-called historic parts. School Settlement is not a building. School Settlement Authority is an institution that will continue to be in this community for another 100 years if this building is built. And despite the concerns of, you know, I understand the noise concerns, that's why we talked about sound attenuation, we talked about a lot of other things to address the concerns of the adjacent property owner. In addition, that's why we're not trying to excavate and we're trying to do as much as we can. We are not going to be disappearing like the condo builders that are building these giant towers in this community. This is the kind of project that should be approved and that's the kind of thing that the residents that came here to talk about are advocating. So I hope, you know, we're going to answer the technical questions and we're going to get back. But this is exactly why the Board of Standards and Appeals is there, to look at how we can find an appropriate use, an appropriate impact to meet a community need that otherwise would not be met by the market forces that are actually destroying this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on it? Ms. Harris?
I think that wraps it up.
That wraps it up. Okay, so did you want to respond to any comments from the public or?
I think Mr. Lang's response does it. We will continue to move forward on the project in as neighborly a way as possible and we will, of course, work with not only the immediate neighbors but the whole block on construction impacts and that sort of thing. And happy to explain more detail the noise insulation, kinds of noise attenuation techniques.
Just in the interest of neighborhood relations, I'd suggest that you invite the neighbors and talk about your project if you haven't already done that.
There has been outreach, but we will continue to work in that vein.
Okay, so how much time do you need to submit your materials? You have a lot of work to do.
I think probably three weeks to, three weeks to a month.
Month?
Yeah, I think a month is fine.
Okay, so if you could submit on the 5th and for a hearing on November, actually, submit on the 12th or, sorry, that's true of opposition. Okay, so submit on the 5th and if opposition wants to submit a response, they would submit on the 12th, right? And for a hearing on the 25th.
Let me just, if you'd give me a moment to check with my client if they want us to move this faster.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry.
I think we could do it in three weeks if you wanted instead of four weeks, but.
Okay, so submit, you submit on the 28th. Opposition submits on the 5th of November. You could submit on the 12th in response and then the hearing's on the 25th.
Okay, submit. Submit October 28th. They submit the 5th if there is anything. I don't think there's been a written submission to date.
I don't know. There will be, okay.
Okay, and then the 25th is hearing.
Right, they haven't had a chance to review the drawings, that's why.
You can watch the video on YouTube.
But there's also, why don't you provide them with a set of drawings?
Happy to do that. The other two gentlemen who are here were at the community board's committee meeting and full board meetings. They've seen this before. We're happy to provide them with the documentation. Just one second.
And by the way, the public can always come to the board's office, 250 Broadway and 29th floor, and get an appointment to take a look at the file.
I know this sounds ditzy and it's late, but we would like to try to meet with DOE or SCA and I'm not sure we can get that done in three weeks. So could we go back to the first proposal?
Start all over, right?
It was the, I'm sorry.
Starting again.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. So does that mean you want to submit then on November 5th?
We'll submit the 5th. Response is the 12th and.
Your response, their response on the 18th.
Right, and still hearing on the 25th is fine with us.
The hearing on the 25th doesn't give us much time to read your response, their response, your response, so let's make it December 9th is the next hearing after that.
The opposition's date is 11/12?
11/12. Yeah.
Okay.
So it's December 9th?
So we have the 5th for us, the 12th for them, 18th for us.
And the hearing on December 9th.
Not the 25th. Very good. Thank you so much.
This concludes the October 7th public hearing for the Board of Standards and Appeals.